So good morning, welcome everyone to Commissioner's Court. Hope everyone's ready for this little blast of weather. But this time like to open the meeting up as we normally do with invocation. We have Brother Dan Rogers with us here and Commissioner McCam is always please leave us some pledges. Would you bow with me please? Father, we come before you this day and we realized how blessed those are people we are. Thank you for the rain that you sent our way and we realize if you don't have to drive very far away from our county and other places where you'll find drought. And so Father, we thank you for the way that you blessed this place specifically. We're blessed in lots of other ways too, Father. We've got a dry building to be able to meet in right now and we thank you for that. We realize there are some in our county and some in our state and even in this city that don't have a place to be able to call home or a roof over their head. Father, we're also mindful that right now there are people being served in our county who have to choose between whether or not they're gonna buy medicine, whether they're gonna be able to pay their utility bills or be able to eat. And so they're being served boxes of food right now or a meal. And so we thank you for volunteers in our county who do those kinds of things. Father, I'm specifically thinking about right now those who work within our county. The Sheriff's Department and the hospitals and other places where people work and volunteer and serve and are paid as well and pray for their safety. Pray for those who help us in our jails and make sure that our people are safe in this county. Thank you so much for the commissioners and pray that you will just help them to be wise and to make good decisions and to keep everyone in mind as they serve this county. Again, Father, thank you for all the blessings you give us. For it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Reverend, thank you, sir. All right, well, the time is 9:02. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting of Commissioners Court to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
No, sir.
Moving on to item one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners Court on January the 17th, 2023. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments to the minutes?
Hearing none, Judge, I move we approve the regular session of Commissioners Court dated January the 17th, 2023 as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the minutes from Commissioners Court meeting, January the 17th, 2023 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, item passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action on Catapult Health Addendum On-Site Agreement. And we have Ms. Bell with us here today. This, of course, as you know, Catapult is a program that we participated in for, I guess this would be the third year? It's second or third year? Anyone remember?
Third.
So, and continuing that as part of our health accounting process. Let Ms. Bell tell you that.
Okay, well, as of yesterday at right before four o'clock, we do have the annex booked totally and we had 16 slots left for the jail. Bodie's working on that with me. It looks like he came up just within a couple of days. And so they told me that until we fill up the second class, then we might open for another one. But until that happens, we have to wait. And so I plan on being there both days to kind of help educate folks that it's like a two-day process, like they're gonna come in the first day and then they'll have to, the importance of having to reach back out to get the results and go over them with the nurse practitioners.
It said that second contact where the consultation will take place.
Yes.
Okay.
Didn't they used to do that all at one time last year?
I wasn't here, but I believe so.
They did.
They went over the results where they're not after they, before they left.
I think they changed that they, they're trying something different this year.
Now, I believe the insurance committee had discussions about this. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, it kind of got put on the back burner. Remember, you want to speak? It kind of got put on the back burner and because of the way it was going, it was gonna be a two- or three-step process. And anyway, we got it kicked back up and I think it starts February the first.
February 1st.
For 100 slots, but they're gonna have to go get their blood drawn or, and do all their stuff. Then they have to have another meeting set up to do the visual that they did with the nurse practitioner somewhere.
Okay.
And is there another step after that or is that it?
I think they just go over the results with them for the lab.
I think it's more the way they're doing it this time so they can get more people involved in it. And it's not as time consuming. You come here, you draw your blood, you schedule, or you'll set up an appointment and you can call from your cell phone or office phone or whatever and then waiting on the nurse practitioner in line up here at the program on that single day trying to get it done. So it kind of spreads it out a little bit.
I know that it was, I don't want to say hectic, but it was very busy in previous years and running up and down the stairs. But anyway, all right. Anything further? Anyone we should add?
I think the other thing we need to do is there is something that Commissioners Court did pass that if you don't fulfill your obligation for your time slot, that you are, you'll be asked to sign a deal for $180 prior to that meeting. Or when they sign up, do they have to fill that out?
They have to. They're, they're all turning them in now. The people that have signed up.
Okay.
And then we have a waitlist. In case someone drops out last minute, we can reach out to someone else and, and get them in.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the court passed that last year, I believe it was, a change of policy that those participating actually needed to understand fully that if they did not show or take steps to cancel, then they would be charged for the appointment slot.
So you said you had a waitlist?
We are, we have started a waitlist because we have a lot that want to come here to the annex and have it done.
So if we're scheduled to go to the annex, can we, I mean, if you need to get them slotted in, can we decide that we want to go to the jail?
I'm sure we can.
Because I mean, if some other people needed to get in like myself, I wouldn't mind not coming to the annex and going to the jail.
Right.
If that would allow somebody else to be able to fill in the slot.
I can reach out and see how to do that, but I'm sure it's, it's doable.
As long as we get all the slots filled.
Yep.
And there are some that would prefer.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Entertain a motion to.
So, second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Tully to approve the amended onsite agreement with Catapult Health with the judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Bell. Item three is consider and take action to enter into interlokal agreements with the City of Chandler and City of Eustis for the Crimes Against Children Task Force. Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Court. This is two more agreements for the City of Eustis and the City of Chandler for the Crimes Against Children Task Force. They're both five-year agreements, just like everything else. And I believe I have one more that I'll be bringing back next week.
Okay. How many does that bring us to now?
Oh, eight, nine, somewhere around there.
Fantastic. Court questions, comments?
I think it's a great deal.
Yep.
I hope every one of our cities and school districts signs on to this.
Anything further? Entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
I'll second the motion.
It requires signature?
Your signature.
Judge's signature. authorized?
I guess. Yeah. So moved to approve with the judge's authorization to sign.
Ms. Second?
I still.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, second by Commissioner McCam to approve the interlokal agreements with the City of Chandler and the City of Eustis with the county judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Next item, item four, consider and take action to allow Marks and ISD to purchase a 2014 Chevrolet Tahoe unit number C14-27 from the county for $4,000. Sheriff?
Yes, sir. This is, this is a vehicle they came and looked at. They are actually, the Marks and ISD is, is in the process of right now starting the Marks and ISD Police Department. And that is what this vehicle will be used for. We will take the radio out and the video camera out, but all the other police equipment will stay. Right now, Tom Adkins is, used to be the corporal for the DPS here. He is actually working over there. His, I've got his license carried through my office. He's a reserve deputy sheriff right now. And once the police department is established, he will be the police chief for the ISD. And so this is a vehicle for the ISD Police Department.
Questions? Sheriff, that was the, the last ISD, I think, that we didn't have some type of immediate coverage on, didn't?
Trinidad, but they're real close to Trinidad PD and Trinidad PD covers them. But yes, that, that was it.
Any questions, comments? Entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll say. Does sheriff's signature or?
Doesn't need a signature.
It doesn't need one. I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson to allow Marks and ISD to purchase a 2014 Chevrolet Tahoe unit number C14-27 from the county for $4,000. Any further comments? All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Thanks, Sheriff. Item five is consider and take action to accept the 2022 racial profiling report from the Harrison County Fire Marshal's Office for filing purposes only. Mr. Renberg?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the yearly report we have to file through T code. That's a racial profiling report. We file an exempt status just simply because we do not make routine traffic stops.
Questions, comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Excuse me. Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to accept the 2022 racial profiling report from the Harrison County Fire Marshal's Office for filing purposes only. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thanks, sir. Oh, got another one for you. Item six, consider and take action to transfer a 2014 Chevy Silverado from the Fire Marshal's Office to Roden Bridge Precinct 3.
This is a 2014 Chevy truck that we've, we've used for public nuisance purposes. We took it out of, out of line and we were using it as a backup. It needed a little bit of front-end repair that we, we didn't want to make since it was a backup and Commissioner come to me and stated that he could use it and since we no longer need it, you know, I'm, I'm okay with it going to precinct three.
Commissioner?
It's, it's the vehicle that the Fire Marshal said he was using as a backup and was probably gonna go offline pretty quick and we had a need for it at precinct three, so I'm asking to transfer, to approve the transfer for this vehicle.
Court questions? Hearing none, entertain?
I'll make the motion that we transfer the vehicle. 2014 Chevy Silverado from the Fire Marshal's Office to Roden Bridge Precinct 3.
I second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the transfer of 2014 Chevy Silverado from the Fire Marshal's Office to Roden Bridge Precinct 3. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item seven, consider and take action to reappoint Rodney Hamilton and Bob?
Teruli.
Teruli? On Emergency Service District Number 4 located in Precinct 1 expired with a term expiring December the 31st of 2024. Commissioner?
These two gentlemen have been on the board for quite some time and this is just to get them back up to date. So they're, they're just renewing. And I got a letter saying that they would like to do that attached.
Questions for the Commissioner? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to reappoint Rodney Hamilton and Bob Teruli on Emergency Service District Number 4 located in Precinct 1 with expiring December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Tully to reappoint Rodney Hamilton and Bob Teruli on the Emergency Service District Number 4 located in Precinct 1 with terms expiring December 31st of 2024. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item eight is consider and take action to appoint a new member, Michael J. McCabe to Emergency Service District Number 4 located in Precinct 1 with a term to begin immediately and expire on December the 31st, 2023. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, this gentleman has shown interest and he's been to a couple of their meetings. And I put him on for a year so it would stagger the dates on their expirations. But I spoke with him on the phone and all the members are happy to have him aboard. And after we do this, we'll have a full board again. It's been several years since that's happened over at ESD 4.
Fantastic. Court, comments, questions? Entertain a motion.
So moved to approve Michael McCabe to exp, on ESD 4, December 31st, 2023.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Tully to appoint a new member, Michael J. McCabe, to the Emergency Service District Number 4 located in Precinct 1 for a term to expire December 31st of 2023. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. This has been.
It's a good thing.
Yes. Item nine is receive financial reports, which we have none. Item 10 is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet, which we have none to present. And item 11 is consider and take action on submitted contracts and we do have one of those today.
Yeah, this is a court interpreter for the courts for sign language interpretations. We heard this back in June. They like how to refer to every January.
Questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve. Need a signature on that. The judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the contract with DEF, excuse me, DEF Action Center for sign language interpreting and captioning services with the county judge's authorization to sign. Are there any further comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 12 is consider and take action on a request for right-of-way permits.
No runways.
Item 13 is consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. I think we've got some of those.
Yes, these are, I have two sets today. Both for 2022. I broke them down because there's just so much going on at the fairgrounds this year. And I knew it would have to come out of contingency because they have been incredibly busy out there. So the first that I present is for the fairgrounds operating.
Court, on our list, it'll be in that second bunch down on page five. Any questions concerning the fairgrounds?
Did we have to use some out of contingency for the fairgrounds?
Yes. We'll have to do it with all three of their, their funds. Concessions, it's just, he's been overwhelmed. It's really offset with all the shaving sales, the boot sales. It's just really been a bane of a year.
It's referring to the contingency. Each one of those, they have their own contingency.
Yes.
Is, is what they have.
From hotel motel tax, I would imagine.
Any further questions on the amendments for the fairgrounds? If none, we'll move to the others.
I think it's all in the motion.
Yeah, with the law.
And then the other one is just starting to clean up our 2022 budget amendments. Of course, there's some salary rules.
Questions for Ms. Lee? Hearing none, entertain a motion on the presented budget amendments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments for 2022 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the budget amendments as presented for 2022. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
She's already answered mine, Judge.
Commissioner Tully?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion on the 22 bills.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 bills in the amount of $101,412.41 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve fiscal year 2022 bills in the amount of $101,412.41 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $250,297.48.
Commissioner Spivey?
No questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tully?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
None.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 bills in the amount of $250,297.48 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the fiscal year 23 bills in the amount of $250,297.48 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 15, consider and take action on submitted flats. Looks like we got a couple today in Precinct 4.
We have two flats in Precinct 4.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, Court, I have a flat here in Sunrise Shores. If you look in the backup, it, it looks like they had their lot surveyed and found out that their mobile home and a storage building crossed over onto the property there. So what they're doing are doing a replat on this subdivision park with another property owner and taking a few foot here and getting their house where it's put only on, on the lots that they're wanting here. And then while they're doing it, they're replating, each one's replating their two lots, putting them together as one parcel.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to replot lots 15, 16, 17, and 18 in Block 21 in the Sunrise Shore subdivision in located Precinct 4, creating lots 15-A and 17-A for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCam to approve the replat in Sunrise Shores for lots 15, 16, 17, and 18 in Block 21, creating lots 17-A and 15-A for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, this is a new subdivision, calling it Crestview Edition. It consists of four lots and they all join county road frontage. We have a, a letter of service from Virginia Hill Water Company and a letter of service from Encore with all the historical commission backups. And I think we've got a, a letter from onsite sewage facility saying that it was, everything's good to go on that.
Questions for the Commissioner? And these are gonna be all serviced by Community Water?
Yes. Yes, I think they're having to upgrade a line. They had to pay Virginia Hill to increase the line size to be able to serve it.
Okay. Any other questions, Court? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plat for Crestview Edition located in Precinct 4 for filing purposes only.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the final plat of Crestwood Edition.
Crestview.
Oh, Crestwood, yeah. Crestview Edition as presented for filing purposes only. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
I'd like to thank our development, new development department for their, their work in on, on, on our, one of our first subdivisions.
That is one, that is one of the first subdivisions. Thank you, ladies. Item 16 is open and consider bids. Well, I wanted to announce to everyone that last week that I was wrong in a discussion that we were having that I was so certain about and our purchasing department was correct, so.
Heaven forbid somebody make a mistake. Okay, Court, I have two things for bids. I have the submitted bids for the culvert pipe and I also have an invitation for bid for y'all's approval for the bulk fuel. So I don't know which one you would like to discuss first.
Let's start with bulk fuel.
Okay, I put together the packet. I propose that we put the ads in the paper this Saturday, the 28th, and then again on February 4th. Open it on February 14th and present those results on the 21st. With the results that come in on the 21st, if everything goes well, then we can do the award for March 1st through the 29th, February 2024.
Court, questions?
Mark and I won't be here on the 21st. I don't know if y'all are still, I don't know that matters, but we'll be in a class.
Okay.
What are we doing on the 21st, opening them?
Court, the results, I would bring them back to the court. I can bump it back all week.
Well, you have to bring them back to the court on the 1st anyway, don't you?
Uh, we, the, well, I would open on the 14th and I was proposing to bring the, the bid results back on the 21st, but let me look at my calendar here. I can do that on the 28th and we can still keep the contract award March 1st through the 29th of '24 as long as we get good responses and everything goes as planned. We need to bump it back a week.
Yeah.
We'll make sure that we get it in front of the full body if we can. Any other questions considering the bulk fuel services bid? Let's entertain, let's do a motion on this to approve the invitation for rebid for bulk services, bulk fuel services.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Tully to approve the invitation for rebid for bulk fuel services as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. All right, now let's get to the call of the bid.
Okay, we received two responses, one from Hamilton Supply, one from Smith Lumber. When I was going through, I noticed that it was a little strange. When I was going through, I noticed that it was a little strange compared to previous years, that on some of the size pipe, Smith Lumber and Hamilton Supply, the bid amount for HDPP was less than HDPE. Commissioner Richardson noticed the same thing. I had Teddy Torres in our office double check, make sure that I didn't make any mistakes. He looked over it, confirmed that I didn't transpose any numbers or anything like that, so I don't really have an explanation because this is out of the norm. But these are the bid amounts that I sent to you are correct.
Questions?
Somebody wrote, somebody wrote something down on the wrong line. Because they're the complete opposite of each other.
Exactly.
It's only on a couple different sizes, and the other ones are similar to right.
Both vendors, though, did do the same thing, so I, I don't know.
Richard County Attorney.
I think we need to clarify with the vendors if we really think this, I've seen that they're already looking at it, to maybe might want to clarify.
I know there was another vendor that wanted to get into, but there was a death in the family, and they didn't get their culvert bid in.
I know we can't probably do it on that purpose, but I don't, I don't think we've got the numbers right here, and I don't know which one is wrong. I mean, I do know which one is wrong, but.
Per the previous statements of the county attorney, we can ask for clarification.
We can ask.
To ensure that this is the correct submission.
Yes, I can send an email back to both vendors and ask them to confirm that these are the amounts. I can send back their response sheets.
Okay. Don't we do, don't we allow for that and come back at the following court?
I'll do.
I think it'd be best for them.
Okay. Well, then we'll take no action at this time on the culvert pipe bid.
All right, thank you.
We got everything signed? Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, at this time, item 17, we're going to convene into executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code Section 551.074 regarding personnel matters, namely, review and interview of applicants for constable precinct two position. Can we have a motion and a time to move into executive session?
So moved at 9:40.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Richardson to move into executive session at 9:40. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. We'll be back shortly.
All right, um, we're gonna...
Item 18 is reconvene into open session. We have a motion?
I'll make a...
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to reconvene into regular session at 10:14.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner McCam to reconvene into open session at 10:14. All those in favor? Passes. We are now back into open session and the item is to consider and take action on matters discussed in the executive session. That executive session was in regards to personnel matters, namely the review and interview of applicants for the Constable Precinct 2 position. Um, that, for those of you that don't know, longtime Constable Mitch Baker retired December 31st of this past year, creating the vacancy. The court opened up for two weeks, accepting applications for appointments. We did receive one application, of which we reviewed and interviewed the applicant in court. We are here to render decision at this time. Any discussion of this matter?
Judge, again, you know, in December, I think that we honored Constable Baker here for his service of Henderson County for all he's done here, but at this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jason Ramsey as the Henderson County Constable Precinct 2.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to appoint Jason Ramsey as Constable of Precinct 2. We do have that motion on the floor, but is there any further comments from other members of the court at this time? Well, hearing none, then. All those in favor of the motion?
Sorry.
(laugh) Item passes unanimously. And we do have Mr. Ramsey with us here in the audience. Thank you so much for being interested in this position. Constable is an important job in this, in Texas government, so we appreciate it. Item 19. If there's no further discussion, item 19 is to consider and take action to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to adjourn at 10:17. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. We will take a 10-minute break and then hopefully...